Okay, we're gonna call them into order. It's Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Born and unborn.
Okay, Don, you got any minutes for reports received and filed?
I do. I have the Collector's January 2022 fees and the Treasurer's January 2022 reconciliation report.
Commissioner, Committee, Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got our ARPA committee meeting this afternoon at three. Soil Waste Management District Board meeting tomorrow at one. Small Communities Informational Meeting for Public Works Wednesday, 6:00 PM.
We got refreshments, right?
Sure.
We've got our JCREP Board Investor Meeting Thursday at 3:00 as well. Chamber Connection, I think, is Thursday afternoon. FFA Dinner Saturday. I think they still have tickets for that if you want to go. You might want to get hold of them ASAP because I think they need a head count. It's out at Wardsville Lines. I've got the radio with Scribner on Sunday, so I shouldn't tell you, although you'll be calling in. Stay in, sleep in, Sam. I think that's about it.
Now, we're up and running already.
Yep. Well, no, we did our... Monday holiday, then? Okay, so if we need stuff on the agenda, we need to get it there early as possible. I think that's it.
Thursday. We're gonna have that one day.
Oh, yeah.
Friday, 9:00 AM.
Yes. Please preferably before.
I know.
In addition to what Jeff has said, I have a Heartland Port Authority meeting on Thursday.
In addition, I think we still have a schools meeting tomorrow at 2:00. And then I was supposed to have, we were supposed to have a meeting Friday with the Chief of the O-Sage, but that's been postponed, and so that's all I've got. Okay. Any Commission comments? Bids and contracts. Contract signing of 2022-01 EMS Vehicle Fleet Maintenance.
This was awarded last week to Donnie Bronson Sons, and so today I'm just needing the contract signing on it.
Good. Thank you, Morrison, for signing the contract for the 2022-01 EMS Vehicle Fleet Maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any unfinished business? Okay. New business accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So I know we had our training. Do we have mileage reimbursements on those?
Not yet. I mean, wait till the end of the month.
Then let's push, don't approve it. We'll push it to the next week.
This is more the credit cards and the E-cards.
All right, just making sure.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, multimodal rail facility discussion with JC Regional Economic Development Partnership.
So we've been working with the JC Rep and Minmo RPC to come up with this project, and it is a multimodal facility in the Algoa area. It's a rail spur extension and rail offloading facility. And Luke Holt Schneider with JC Rep and David Bach with Minmo RPC are here to talk about the process. Luke can probably give a summary of the project and how we've come to today and then where to go moving forward. It is going to be a public-private partnership, and a portion, a good portion of the funds will come from, hopefully, the successful receipt of an Economic Development Administration grant through the U.S. Department of Commerce. So I'll turn it over to Luke, and he can explain more of the project, and we'll get into some final details at the end.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. And so just appreciate the opportunity to explore the project fully with the Commission. I've had a chance to visit each of you individually over previous weeks to kind of give you some background on the conversations that have led to the meeting today, but ultimately seeking full Commission support to pursue some additional funding from other sources to move this project forward. So as Eric mentioned, from a high level, the concept is to build and develop a multimodal, so a rail and surface transportation facility out in the, it's called the Partnership Business Park, but it's the Algoa Industrial Area. There's currently rail access available to individual sites, industrial sites, currently out in Algoa Park, but the ability for additional use for other industries not currently rail-served is minimal, and that is a, really a strategic asset that many companies, industries are seeking for the high cost of transportation infrastructure, for raw material coming in as well as finished material going out. So kind of stepping back, probably two, two and a half months ago, I think it was late November, maybe early December, started to explore this concept. You know, from a high level, it had been discussed in conversation in previous years, but it never really was further pursued to determine the feasibility. So we called in David Bach with Minmo Regional Planning Commission to help explore this concept, to see if it's viable. We brought in the Federal Economic Development Agency, which is an arm of the Department of Commerce at the federal level, to see the potential for them to partner in funding for this concept. And based on a reaction from EDA at the front end of the conversation, they were very interested, primarily because it's dealing with additional economic infrastructure as well as it has the opportunity to assist industries regionally. So it's not specific to one industry or one community, but it has the potential to be a regional asset. So based on their support to pursue the project, pulled together a team, including the county, Minmo Regional Planning Commission, some private partners. We've engaged with the city on this concept to explore the viability and feasibility in order to pursue the project. And so we've worked with CMPS to put together a preliminary engineering report, which I believe Eric has provided at least components of that to the Commission for some visual representation. But ultimately, it was about a little over $3 million cost estimate for the initial construction of the infrastructure. So the beginning build-out of this multimodal facility. So the initial phase would be the extension of rail service of around 3,500 feet to a multimodal facility, which would then have about 3,000 or a little above rail lines that would be for loading and unloading. So your main 3,500-foot line that would then have branches off of it, I think allowing like three separate spurs to be built at this facility. So the $3 million is for basic construction of that, of those rail components, but the land that we're looking at has the opportunity of, you know, 20 to 25 additional acres that would be able to be used for additional storage, warehousing, and kind of lay-down space as part of the multimodal. So during this process, we've reached out to roughly 25, 30 industries in about five counties, including Coal, to seek support and interest. Very good response to this point of clear intent to utilize this facility if built, but then others that support the concept and would further explore it moving forward. So what we would, you know, like to discuss and ultimately receive feedback on is, you know, would the county, as the owner of the rail service currently out in the Partnership Business Park, be the willing applicant to the EDA in the request of $1.5 million? The grant request would need to be in by the end of this month. We've been working on this to build the contents and build the narrative and put together the cost estimates over the past couple of months now, but we're needing kind of that final approval to ultimately submit the request to EDA, and we really need to have that in by the end of this month to get our place in line. The, again, the request would be about a million and a half. That's where we're capped by EDA. They can do up to 50% of a project cost not to exceed $1.5 million. So our threshold is $1.5 million. The additional match or other funds necessary, we would be looking at both public and private. We've explored in conversation to see, you know, the potential for the county to be a supporting partner, the city. There's private industry that have voiced willingness to support this project as well, as we would also be looking at state resources, as mentioned previously, that are rolling out this summer to support this. So really feel it's a transformational, you know, development opportunity to provide, you know, our industry's an asset that they currently don't have. And those that do have it, it would not take away from their current situation. So anything I'm missing out, or?
Of course, we'll have discussion, but ultimately, we would need a support letter from the County Commission, which I sent a draft of what that could look like. It's definitely open to suggestions. And then in talks with the city about the possibility of this being a cooperative project with cooperative project funding, we've also prepared a draft of a development agreement between the city, county, and a private partner that would be signed once receipt of the grant is given. We won't sign or do this agreement until we know the grant's received, and then we can move forward with what we know would be the funding request, additional funding request at the time. And so in talking with David, that's acceptable for the grant submittal. We don't have to have the signed agreement. We just have to have a draft of what it would be. Another item that will be brought to the table and it will be included in the submittal for the grant would be securing an operator for this, for this rail spur line and facility. Right now, there is no operator for the current rail that we have other than us, and I wouldn't really call us an operator in the true sense of it. So we would include in the, in the submittal a draft RFP to request proposals to be, for somebody to be the operator of the system. And that would be the full, from the UP main line, the full rail spur, and then the facility. So that would be part of ultimately where we would like to go with this rail spur and service out there.
I think right now, I don't know why we wouldn't be the party that applies for that $1.5 million. So I mean, that's what you're asking today, and I would, I would hope that our commissioners, my fellow commissioners are also okay with applying for that because it, you know, that's what you're asking now.
And we would have roughly 10-ish, we'll say 10 months from the point of applying before ever being awarded. And so a lot of those items that Eric mentioned, well, within probably about three months, we'll, we'll get a informal kind of response from EDA, letting us know that there's, you know, further consideration given. So they're, they're continuing to move through the process. You know, it'll be contingent, but we know that we're in the mix. And we wouldn't anticipate a final approval till probably very late in calendar year '22, maybe early '23. And so that time period gives us the opportunity to get all those other pieces in place prior to ever getting awarded the final grant. So, but the rough part of this is that the quick turnaround is just due to a very competitive grant cycle and the need to get ourselves in line to ultimately be considered right now.
Luke, the way this, the numbers on this could work out or might work out is 3.2 total minus 1.5 equals 1.7, less other state money, private money. You net down to something, and you divide that by two, and half of it is county, half of it is city.
Correct. So we're looking at, and have already initiated conversations with a contribution credit program that could help reduce the overall finances based on a contribution tax credit to reimburse those donors. Also looking at other state programs that could specifically help finance some of the infrastructure. So yes, we're, we're starting with, you know, $1.5 to $1.7 million as the match, but ultimately, we're going to continue to close that gap to make that number, you know, consistently smaller.
I just want to say something about the, I know the operations of the track itself, but keep in mind the insurance part of that liability will go forward.
That would be, definitely.
I think the BHNO Railroad, you know, Bushman, Hellsher, and Auto. We're in the railroad business, so we just, you know, we can, we can do that. But, and I think really this could benefit the port, even though it's on the other side of Algoa, but it's, you know, I could see some of our entities that are shipping by barge or having stuff come in by barge could, could use this too, so.
Yeah, the operations part has been something. That's the angle that I really liked it because we would still own it, but we'd be out of the business of having to maintain it. And we get these nice letters saying you have to do this and that, and occasionally we've got to do some kind of maintenance on it. And then the insurance and stuff, we can roll that into the operations of it and take it off of our lap. I think it'd pay us back over a certain amount of time. I don't know if it'd be 10 years or 30 years, but I think it's, it's a good investment to take a look at.
This could be complementary to the Heartland Port location out there as well.
Yeah.
Yep. You know, it would be ultimately the same rail service that would serve a port development on the south side of the river, and then with the capability for kind of lay-down and storage space on a high ground that negates the flooding impacts of, you know, the current port sites or locations that are being looked at. This could be a complement to that.
What we need today, then, just to agree to sign a letter to pursue the EDA grant?
Yes, and I have a draft that I will send you and include possibly Debbie on it too, to review and make sure it's exactly how you want it. And then next week, we can approve the letter, sign the letter, and then get it to them, and then I'll move forward and be all ready to do the grant application.
What's the deadline for the application?
End of this month.
Okay. Okay, then we're good. Yeah.
We're good up to grants.gov, sign-ups are... It's been, been a challenge, but yes, we are, with the help of Debbie, we are ready to go on that. So we're set up to where we can do the online submittal and be good.
All right. So we'll sign the letter when you bring it up, and you just need a kind of a go-ahead today? So no formal action?
I don't think so. I think tomorrow, or next week, we can do the letter and the formal approval of moving forward with the, the project and the grant submittal.
All right. Cool.
Got it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Been seeing a lot of you all up here, Dave.
Yeah. I appreciate David. As I said, he's the one that brought the $2 million grant for the EMS to us. So I, you both are...
Good partners.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Okay.
Eric, thank you.
I added this to the agenda, the Salute to America Scholarship, sponsorship. And I know it's already in the budget, but I just thought we ought to formally approve. We were doing $10,000 the last few years. We've been doing $5,000 for Salute to America, so.
Do we have a contract with them or anything, or just we need to approve it?
We'll just, we just modify the same one that we do every year. Change the dates.
We'll bring that to you next, if you can.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard of it.
Okay. Okay.
Just to speak on it for a second. The 4th of July is on a Saturday this year, I think. So on the 3rd, at Friday evening, is when the festivities begin with a, with a parade. I signed a contract yesterday with the, acting as the Chair of the Salute 22 for the fireworks. And this will be the first year, of course, we have access to Adrian's Island during that time, although we did learn that I think Parks wants to shut it off that evening and not have folks on the island the evening of the fireworks, but during the day for Friday, Saturday, and I, there could be people still around Sunday, I guess.
That's on a Monday.
I'm sorry? What is? The 4th?
Of course, on Monday.
I'm sorry, then. I've got the wrong date here. Okay, so still, the 3rd is, is the, is the parade, which would be on Saturday?
Sunday would be it.
I'm sorry. The parade is at 6:15, I think, the evening before. Move everything back a day. So do we need a motion to make the payment, or we're, we're okay?
We'll bring the contract next, next Tuesday, and then you can, I'll sign that contract with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's in charge of weather? Request no rain for the parade.
Well...
No fooling.
Wait a minute. That was, that wasn't even, that was a year ago, wasn't it?
Two years.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, branched.
Yeah.
That's all right. One out of the last probably 13. That was pretty good.
Yeah, we had, I had my Corvette out.
I expect there'll be some politicians with, with floats this year.
You think?
Could be.
Not me. I don't have that many friends. Or family, you know, it's, anyway. Okay, we will put that until next week. Approval of second round of premium...
You know, Sam, I could, I could modify it and print it out right now.
That's fine. We can get it done.
Okay.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. I think that's just what Sam wanted to make sure that we had some kind of formal approval, so.
Okay. Approval of second round of premium pay, and I guess...
What we're suggesting is the premium pay, this being the second round, get extended for three more pay periods going to the last check being issued on March 31st, so corresponds in line with our reporting to them, so for the quarter.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Continuing.
I think for right now, we'll just continue. I know we can look at it at the end of March.
I'm with, I'm good with that as well. Just to recap a little bit, a pay period of premium pay is approximately $57,000 cost. We've been through two of those, so we're at $114,000. If we did that for, for 26 pay periods, it'd be the $1,005,000 that we sort of threw out there to that number. It's about $48,300 pay, and the balances, payroll taxes, and benefits, and so on. So I'm with this. We can, we're going to continue it for three more pay periods. We're going to monitor the, the environment that we're in in terms of, is everything green? Are the numbers up, down, better? Debbie, you've told me that internally, our own people that, that, that report, they raise their hand because of COVID, and they're into the, into the 40 hours that we extended. And over the last pay periods, that's been 19, or is that monthly, or is that pay period? Pay period. There were 19, there were 20, then the drop to eight. But the next one's going to be eight plus, we think. So it's, it's trended down, but now it maybe it's plateaued down to a number. We'll see what happens as we go forward.
Right, and these are only employees that have actually requested it. If they know they've already used it, they won't request it.
Okay, so it's not a real true reading on, on cases internally, but it's for those who've requested COVID.
And that will bring out actually next agenda, because that ends on February 28th, that 40 hours that you guys extended.
Okay. Is there a cumulative number of how many of our people have? What, what is that number?
So there's not very many left, is there?
That's what I'm, at some point, we run out of a...
Well, some have used it several times, but to the total of only the amount of hours, you know, they didn't need as many hours.
I'm sort of curious, is that of our total pay force of 400, 300, what do we have?
Yeah, about 400.
About 400. How many of, of the family of Coal have been through the ordeal? And that's, you don't have to give it to us right now, but sort of curious. Maybe, maybe Christie would, no?
We don't, yeah, we would have to have, but there's lots of people who probably haven't, didn't get tested yet. Right.
True.
And then we have people who work for Coal County but don't live in Coal County, and we only get reported of those who live in Coal County.
Got it.
And we do know some people that just get tested, home-tested, and, but that's not what we require. We require a different kind of test for them to be able to apply for that time.
Okay.
Eric, are we still doing the testing out of Hyde Park?
No. We're not doing the testing at Hyde Park. We stopped that two weeks ago now.
Okay.
We're still providing tests in-house. EMS is still providing tests for other public safety agencies when they need to. It has slowed down rapidly. However, we do see a couple tests, so we, they come back positive. So we're not in the clear yet.
Nobody's got the flu, though, these days, by golly.
Not kind of would, damn. We have long ways to go still. Okay, so do we need a motion to approve the second round of premium pay?
I'll make a motion to approve the second round of premium pay for the next three pay periods.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll go back to the Salute to America sponsorship. This agreement is entered into this day, 2022, by, between the Coal, County of Coal and Salute to America Foundation. Whereas Salute to America organizes and presents an annual community celebration of the 4th of July that includes family entertainment, a variety of activities, music, and fireworks display. And whereas the Coal County Commission finds that Salute to America provides a valuable community activity to the citizens of Coal County, now therefore, the parties in consideration of the foregoing recitals and the mutual covenants and promises contained herein hereby agree as, agree as follows. The county will provide $5,000 to Salute to America, so.
Yeah, we've got it in the budget, so.
Yeah. Yeah, probably.
Motion to make the contribution to Salute to America $5,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion of 2022-02 real estate bid, Mount Carmel Road.
Before you start off, just, we have 219 employees, like 26 of them were reoccurring at some point, so a total of 100, sorry, detractors.
That have used some of their time for the period. And that doesn't mean they had it, but there's people that have taken advantage of using it, so.
Well, and if their kids at the beginning.
Right.
Yeah.
Family.
I sent you that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I think we're ready for you.
Ready. So I had the bid opening for the real estate sealed bid on Mount Carmel Road in Eugene. We had multiple individuals submit responses, with the highest being Kurt Gruce, offering $42,207. He did have a purchase offer signed and 15% of the amount he offered in a check. So today, if we award it to him, then we can sign the purchase offer. And Jeff, I know you had a question about the closing costs. It was in here, that the buyer was responsible for closing costs and the recording cost.
Okay. Jill?
We're, we're just going to do a quick claim due to, so whatever they choose to do.
There's still costs associated with it, so that was my question, is how, if we had that in the contract or the bid process. So it appears to be in there, so that answered my question on that. And we can't, I guess we need to have a closing date on it to get the title work done and the quitclaim deed done and to get a check, so.
Yeah, he, once I notify him, I'll call him today. He has three days to give us a check for the remaining amount.
Are we going to be ready to close on it in three days? We got all the title work done?
We didn't do any title work.
We gotta do something, though, that you take to the recorder to record the transfer, I thought, so.
We had that quitclaim due. We acquired this property through a collector's meeting.
I'm fine if that's all we need. I'm just saying that's, I'd be surprised if you can have it done in three days. So when he, when he brings you money, he's going to want title, so. Okay, if that works, that's fine. If we gotta do something different, let's... title. So, okay, if that works, that's fine. If we got any something different, let us know.
Do we?
Well, they want to pay for it. It's kind of like when we acquired the parking lot from the city next to the church.
That happened in three days.
I scheduled that. I called Cole County Abstract.
That took three months or more.
Yeah, well, that's because they kept blowing it off.
They being the city?
Well, it took Ryan a while to get me a
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking you to who, who is they took the time?
I took his time getting the schedule for closing.
Well, they kept saying we really didn't need
Because we weren't having title work done.
I withdraw my question. I'll make a motion that we sign the purchase order for the real estate on Mount Carmel Road.
And would that be something, Jill, that I would alone sign when we, so do I need?
Hang on, we got a motion on the floor. I'll second it. So now you can discuss.
Okay.
Sorry.
This is just the purchase agreement. They submitted that with their bid, and you're accepting that, so you're gonna sign it. So then after that is when all the mechanizations occur as far as, you know, if they want title work done and all that business, then they schedule that, and they get us a check, and then I've already prepared the quick claim deed. And Eric and I just have a question about believing the scripture.
And if that's all they need from us when they bring their check in, that's fine. I just, I haven't done a lot of these quick claim deed transactions, so I wasn't sure. But I've done enough real estate transactions that I know that there's not much that happens in three days. So I just was making sure that we know that.
I'll just ask if Jessica can call him and tell him that, and then refer him to Jill for anything else or something like this. I mean, you're not in it anymore at that point.
Yeah.
Yep, you got the purchase order, so we're, we're ready to go. Bring the money.
So if, if everything, then do I need to get, have them amended to give me authority to sign?
Sign the quick claim deed. Yeah, why don't you, like, vote to let Sam sign the quick claim deed?
I'm fine with that, too. Then you can do it whenever.
Is there a motion on the board?
Well, I just wanted to see if we wanted to modify it.
We can't have that in motion.
Okay, okay. Call for a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, another motion to authorize, a motion to authorize Presiding Commissioner to sign the quit, quick claim deed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
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 We will move on. Health, health, Health Department refrigerator discussion.
Weren't you all just there? We were.
It's a chilling issue. All day, a couple weeks ago.
I told you they have a virus. Our refrigerators have a virus. So we got the one fixed with the evaporator coil, and then last week, one of the older ones, which is from 2005, the evaporator coil was fixed in 2019. It acted up and started having issues. So we had the same repairman come out and look at it, and his, he decided it was probably the evaporator coil again. And since we had already fixed it once, and this is a 2005 unit to just replace it. So we have the two quotes from Helmer, which I sent to you. The refrigerator's about, with the standard shipping, it's 3,600. With their delivery to the Health Department and setup, it's 45. And then Donna and Tara did a little bit more research and got a couple more quotes.
Yeah, this one was a Thermo Fisher Scientific, and it was $10,0948. And then we got one yesterday from ABS, and it is $5,750. The ABS one, I think, is the one that Tara said that the state person who does the audits with the VFC vaccine and stuff said that a lot of the people who use VFC use this one from American Biotech Supply. But she, when she goes over to St. Mary's and stuff, they have the Helmer. I mean, I think the Helmers have been fine.
Right, and the new Helmer is supposed to have a different glycol
Yes, it's supposed to be
container for the evaporator coil. So hopefully, they don't have those issues anymore. So.
So is that, is it a Helmer that we've got issues with from 2005?
Yeah, that we have three Helmers.
2019.
Right.
Okay. I think Jeff had some, said that, you know, maybe we don't need the, have them
We had that one in there that's older, but I don't think we can steal any parts off of there to make the other one work. That was one question I had. So the other one was a lot older than I thought. We have, we have a 2005, 2008, and 2019. And the five and eight now would be done.
Right, well, the five.
Yeah, we have two, the, we have two of them from 2019. We bought them a few months apart. And then we have the 2005 one.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that we are using right now to operate. So the 2005 one is the one that started going out last week, so.
Next, we figure out how to put a alarm, because that's basically all that was playing it. And the other one is, the alarm is on it, right?
The 2008, the sitting in the other room?
Well, I mean, with these refrigerators in your, your residential refrigerator, they just have it hooked up to where it tells you if it's
Well, we, we bought one of those one time, and we were using it for our commercial vaccine. But the temperature was all over this place. The Helmers are like, if you go, because we have to read the temperatures twice a day, the temperature stays even. So we were having, that one just keen. It stayed within range probably, but it was just all over the place, because they really weren't meant to be probably opened as much as we open them. I don't know, I don't know anything about refrigerators, but.
It didn't seem to be as steady as temperature. And we have money in the ELC expansion contract. I built in money for two refrigerators, so it'll be covered by the DHSS money. So.
Unfortunately, I think we're just gonna have to bite the bullet and get a new one. I was just trying to figure out if there's a different way to do it. And I mean, it's not like your beer fridge. If it's, you know, five degrees off, it's not that big a deal. You'll be all right. But when you have medicine that you're keeping in there, so.
It is big.
Or your wine, right, Sam?
Bourbon. I don't have to
So we would still recommend to go with the Helmer, and we would like to go ahead and pay the extra thousand for the True Blue delivery, because they set it up. They bring it into the Health Department. Otherwise, we have to have it delivered to the EMS building, and then we have to have it brought over and set up by our own staff.
I just have trouble swallowing that one. I don't know why we can't, why can't they deliver it to the Health Department?
Because we don't have a dock. And they load it from their truck.
If you needed a dock, you got to get about four people and unload it, and then take it off the crate and roll it in. They're on wheels.
We can do it, right?
No, there are security there, so.
Right.
I don't, I just, I think we should be able to do that part. I don't think you all should have to do it, the Health Department staff, but I think we've got people on staff here that can do it.
So if they deliver it to EMS, are you saying we can move it over to the Health Department?
I could get one more person with me, and we could get it unloaded and
At the Health Department.
Yes.
Eric, could you strap that thing to a Striker car, car of yours and get it over there? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Debbie says workman's comp.
Do we have liftgate on any of our trucks at Public Works, Eric? Okay.
Eric says, I want no part of this discussion.
Well, you got a liftgate, you back it up to their truck, where they want to meet you. You have to load it on it, and then you put it on your thing, and you drop it down. It's, for a thousand dollars, it's just, I don't know. I'm not, we swallowed it last time, the white glove treatment. It's worth it for them to do.
One time they had, we had it delivered to
Yeah, because we had to wait for Greg and
Yeah.
So they bring it, and then they, they put it where it needs to be, and
It's on wheels. I think one of the last one, we wheeled it outside so that he could blow it out and do what he needed to without making a mess and interrupting staff, so.
Do they remove the old one, then?
No, I don't think, they won't take it. I think that, of course, they will take it for a fee, and I don't think she
No, we have a really, really old one sitting in the back hallway that is
So I mentioned to Greg that we need to get that one picked up and brought over here to surplus, too, because it's just, it's, we're not saving it for anything. We can't steal any parts off of it. So I guess when we get this replaced, let's get both of them.
Yes.
You'll sell it from there?
Somebody could make a smoker out of it or something.
That's fine. Well, I mean, that's, that's an idea.
And we could go ahead and sell the other one, too, because we're not gonna plug it back in and just get it out of there, so they get it. We don't have to move it twice.
So if, if we did the regular delivery standard shipping, does it have to be delivered to a dock, or would they deliver to the Health Department? Do they have a liftgate on the truck that delivers it?
No, I don't think they have a liftgate. I think it has to be delivered to a dock, or if you had your, how are you all talking about, I don't know.
We lift stuff. We use our backs.
I don't.
I'm fine with getting a refrigerator. If y'all wanna do the white glove, then do it.
I'd just feel a little more comfortable if, if the seller sees that it's plugged in, turned on, working. And then there's no question about, we dropped it when we got it off of their truck to where we got it into, into the building. So when they walk away from it, it's at the right temp, it's working, everybody's signed off on it. Don't want to waste a thousand, but I don't think it's wasted. I think it's insurance. So I'll, I'll vote to make a motion to do the Helmer for 4,500.
It is 4,588.11.
4,588.11 for the Helmer. My motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. I'm okay with the Helmer refrigerator.
And while we're here, I would like to bring up that, you know, we've had, we had several items on our list when the sheriff did the security assessment. And one of the things that we've talked about is a generator. And we tried to get a generator with that crisis COAG agreement, but things fell through between DHSS and CDC, and it didn't get approved. Well, Sunday was another example of why we need a generator, because that power outage that affected Missouri Boulevard also affected the Health Department. So Tara and Jen had to go load up all the vaccines and take them to St. Mary's, because our, our power was out. And then Monday morning, Brent had to come over and fix our internet and phones because we didn't have any. And then something else was with the security, the heat, the heat wasn't running.
We forgot about, about the alarm.
Our security cameras. So we really do need to figure out a way to get a generator. So Chris is working on that again. And I know that there was some discussion about, do we just get one that runs the refrigerator room and the server and like the doors? And I think that was like 125,000. Or do we try to get one to run the whole building, which is a lot more, but then it would run the whole building, and we could continue to operate if there was a power outage during the day. And I think that something to do with the larger one is the fuel source. So I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar for like the ARPA funds or whatever, that we, we do need a generator. And even Brent was like, you guys don't have a generator here? Because like I said, we had no phones or internet yesterday morning. They had to go back to St. Mary's and get all the vaccines. It, and, you know, you risk getting them out of temp when the refrigerators go out and you have to pack them all up. Take them somewhere different, you know, we, it's important for us to get one.
Yeah, I think with ARPA money, this is probably a good time to do that. Have Chris
He's working, yeah.
Have Chris work that out.
Yesterday morning, he's like, okay, that's back at the top of my list, because he had been working on security cameras and other things. So generator. And I think he's gonna work with Greg, because, like I said, there was something, we're trying, if we, and I told him to just get quotes for both of them, and then we could come and have the discussion with you guys, whether you wanted to do just those couple rooms, or if you wanted to do the whole facility. Does that sound like a good plan?
That sounds like a plan. Just for memory, memory purposes, have we been through a generator discussion on Juvenile before?
The one from Ju, our old building went to Juvenile.
Oh, that's, that's the story, okay. Wait a minute, your old one?
We had one at the old building.
Oh, okay. Not at the current building. The old one at the old building went to Juvenile.
Right.
Got it.
Did we hook up pigtails or anything at the new one?
I don't think we have anything there. But I don't, yeah, I don't know, I don't think so. I know that the Community Health Center did not have a generator when we went there. I don't think they did anything.
Yeah, but I was thinking we had something hooked up at the
I don't know for sure. That's a great question.
I'd get the prices on both, like you said.
That's what we thought we'd, I told Chris to do, and then we would have a talk about
Make sure we're sitting down when we get them prices, because it's, it's, the hard cost.
I know.
Costs more refrigerators.
Like I said, it's just those, I mean, even if we just did those two rooms, at least then it wouldn't mess with our server and
Eric, do you have one? Generator? Okay.
So, put that back on your list.
Yes.
I think you just did.
And I think the whole neighborhood by Health Department was probably hoping that it came back on before the Super Bowl. It did, it came back on about 3:30, I think.
Yeah.
3:30 or 4:00.
Or something, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, signing of surplus titles for Public Works.
We have a few vehicles that we need to surplus. We're getting ready to put everything on Purple Wave. There's two, 2003 International Tandem Dump Trucks that were replaced with the two new ones that we got last year, and then a Chevrolet 1500 and Ford F-150. Both those are pickups. So we just need to have these signed.
Yeah, Purple Wave is one of the sponsors for some of our meals at our training last week.
Last week, yes. The two Internationals, we think will bring anywhere from 15,000 to 25,000 in that range. It's a little unknown, just with used vehicles and pricing nowadays. And then two pickups, probably 750, a thousand or so. They're pretty worn out. Just need to have these signed.
Can we do this all at one time? Debbie, are you going to need one individually?
No.
Make a motion to sign the surplus titles as presented. I think there are four?
Four, yeah.
Okay, four of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's all I have on our agenda. Do we have anything else that?
Don't think so.
Okay.
Anyone? Make a motion, stand in recess until 3 o'clock.
3:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.